... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
...
This is the meeting of the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session on March 24th, 2019, at 6:00 AM. Members present are Darrell Baker, County Clerk, Vicky Harless, Charles Sands, and Josh Flowers. First, I would need a motion to approve the minutes of our last regular session of the Lincoln County Commission that was held on March 7th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the last?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second on paper. I will...
Alright.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed in under public comment. The next thing on the agenda, I put this on here because I wanted to talk to you all about the fishing tournament that we usually have in June. Of course, we haven't been able to budget anything for it. Last year, we kind of made it happen. So, with some help from other people, but if it would be alright with you all, can we draft a letter? I know Walmart can give us some money if I request it. Darrell's went and helped me get the stop. I think last, the year before last, they gave us $50, but they said if we would request it ahead of time, they could give us more. So, would it be alright for us to fix up a letter and let me go around and try to gather up the money for this so we can? I really want to keep this going. Darrell usually goes with me and helps me put something in. It is just great, isn't it, to watch the kids? We have a good turnout and they love it. We give them a fishing war and they're happy as can be.
You want a motion to override you do that.
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. The motion is second on paper. I will go down and see what I can gather up. If you all know anybody that would want to make a little donation or...
I'll be the first one to commit.
Alright. How about you?
I'm pretty much fine.
This is new.
I'm going to help you out too, Sean.
Long way.
Maybe we had the Charleston egg in last year and we did it for just really a little bit of nothing.
Somebody was asking me about the other day if you were going to have it. I said, "Yeah, we're going to make it happen."
Somewhere.
Just see how good it's going to be. We'll make it happen.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we'll all get on that. And we usually have it, what is it, the first weekend of June? Which kind of has not been the best because it seems like the past few years, it's been the first Saturday for soccer games.
That's the last Saturday of soccer.
It's the last Saturday?
Yeah.
I know soccer's been a conflict.
We finished soccer June the 1st.
So, maybe we could bump it back to the next weekend and how that would be better. I think whatever day you want to come in, I don't think it happened enough. I think Jerry and Terry and his sisters are really work hard on, they do all the grunt work to it pretty much, getting it all set up and doing so. We'll try to make sure we don't, I'll talk to them if we can make it not conflict with soccer. Mary can come and help us as well.
Yeah, soccer, we're good at it, Sean.
Yes, we are. Nothing good.
Okay, under our finished business, we have Armstrong on there. And Armstrong, we still haven't got heard anything back from him. So, let's don't put it under, do you want to just keep it under our finished? Let's just wait till we get something, then we'll go back.
Okay, sure.
I did notice, if I can interject something here, I did notice from the bills though that we, they've already taken care of getting rid of some of the lines. We're already saving money on that.
Yes.
It's about, what about $1,200 less this month, so.
Yep, that's true. So, that's a good thing. And then, you know, whatever they get, we're not in a huge rush on the rest of it, so whatever they can make it happen and see what the bottom line is. Okay, the next thing is the West Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department. We talked about this last meeting with your rate sheet that we have Chris Lester here with us tonight. You're the deputy rate sheet over there. He presented us, and you have it, I think, in your folder, the rate sheet that they presented. And we have contacted some other fire departments in the county and have got different scenarios where different ones are doing things. Some of them aren't, some of them are doing it different. So, Josh actually went through, do you have that with you?
Yeah, and I may have some questions, but I think, I think what we've, first off, I think what we've determined, or at least the ones that Mary's been able to reach out to, that I believe Allen Creek does this for out-of-county auto accidents and house fires. I think Harts Creek does the same thing. Now, Guy and River and Duvall, we don't think do this. We're not exactly sure about handling it.
Correct.
But what we did, we went through and asked, since we knew Harts was doing it and that we thought the required commission approval, so we tried to track back when they got their rate sheet approved. And we tracked it back to, was it 2011?
11.
2011. And I guess my question, my question, let me see that sheet. The only differences that I see between what was approved from Harts to what you guys were requesting is that the Harts had a, it was actually a list of services that was being charged, whereas the one that you presented was basically just for certain equipment per hour. I guess my, I guess a couple of things here for my purposes was that, do you think there would be any objection from West Hamlin or any of the other volunteer fire departments if we tried to make this more uniform across the county?
Oh, yeah.
Actually have one rate sheet for everyone? Now, whether they decided to participate or not, that's, it'd be completely up to the individual volunteer fire departments. But do you think there'd be any objection if we tried to get some agreement from all of the fire departments on a rate sheet?
No, no. Anything, okay, I can do it.
What we were thinking, and we've got this, Josh pulled back the one from Harts from 2011. So, we thought that probably the best place to do this was at your county fire association meeting. You all could all get together and come up with something that kind of consensus, like you said. And then we'll approve just for the whole county. And then it's available to everybody. Want to do what you can, if you don't...
And if you want to do what we were showing at Harts, it's already been approved, so, you know, we just add you all to that.
Right.
But if you saw if things were different, then we just redo the...
And we have this.
Yeah, we have what, Harts was actually approved and doing now. It just, I thought that it would just be better to be uniform all across the county so there's some consistencies. So, if maybe we could give you this to take to the next association meeting to discuss, to see if it's in agreement and then come back, then we could potentially approve this Lincoln rate sheet.
And maybe Harts would rather do the same use of it and change, you know, you know what I mean, or you all would agree and tweak it to how it looks.
We didn't come up with a rate sheet ourselves. That's something we kind of derived from, that they kind of copied from, but other counties were getting that.
Yeah, and this, and what you guys, what was given to you guys, that may be something that, you know, the other fire departments would rather do. But I just, I think there's some consensus that to have some uniformity on what is used across the county would probably be the best, so.
That way, there's no difference.
Yeah, right.
So, I don't know when you want me to get in.
Maybe the first two can mark her angle.
Okay.
That'll work out pretty good.
Yeah, that'll work out.
Then you could get back some of it to us before our end of April, March, May meeting, and then we can, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, the next thing, thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome.
The next thing on the agenda was the probation office space, and we have Derek here.
Yeah.
And we thought we had something working on it and it didn't. It's going to pan out, so. Jerry just told them now, he's got a new person starting in 10 days.
10 days.
And nowhere to put them. Don't even have a desk up there for them. Now, what's that bring you up to, I mean?
Just, it would be 12 of us between both counties. Used to be me and Tom and one of. There's what? Five, six, seven, seven and a half work over here, something like that. Eight, I forget what the...
Now, will this new person be here at a time or will he be one that goes far?
As of right now, the plan is that they would be here all the time. Lincoln County's numbers are greater than Boone County's numbers. I do have an officer who may, I'm pretty sure, going to be on active duty with the US military scene. So, he works in Boone, so I may have to move over there to pick up that slack for a few months. But, you know, that's in the future a bit. My understanding is my new guy's starting April 1. I'm absolutely a team player here. I'll do whatever, I'll work with you on everything, but, you know, you're required by law to provide me a space.
And you have been patient with that.
I've tried.
You have.
Four, five years.
Figure this out. Josh said this is a puzzle and I think that's a pretty good way to describe it, shuffling people to know how we shuffle in a room.
And I understand that, but, you know, they keep adding to our requirements and along with our requirements, we have gotten more staff, you know, I can't. And I hope to think that you guys think we do a good job for you. We try to save you money wherever we can and try to keep the public safe and all the things that we're supposed to do while rehabilitating, you know, all of our addicts and some of our criminals.
Who's the person who's going to be serving?
They don't have an exact date yet. That's one thing I've learned from this, is that the military's not really exact on stuff until last minute. They give you approximates.
Any suggestions or what are they going to just...
I mean, I have a question again. I'm going to plead ignorance for the first year, but...
Good point.
Yeah. I said, "No, get longer than that."
The one space that you had mentioned before, if I remember where the home of the guys are.
Yeah.
Even if that was available to you, that still wouldn't be sufficient, would it?
Thought ideal, no sir.
So, I mean, that's...
I would end up probably putting two people, at least two people in that space, maybe two and a half people.
So, you're going to need a situation where you have more space than even, you know, one room that's available or could potentially be available even if that was...
In an ideal world.
Right.
But I've worked in Lincoln County long enough to know that I don't work in an ideal world. So, you know, I do the best I can with what I have. But yeah, you're right, that's not enough space, just that one room.
We've got exactly the opposite problem. We get more and more stuff to do with less and less people to do it.
You're getting more people, I know.
I see the only growing entity in the building, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
I can hear my voice echoing in my eyes.
But, you know, we could, we have like a little bit of room, maybe in Darrell's office, we got, but you don't want to separate your people, they, would it be...
How efficient would that be?
Right.
You know?
I didn't know if you had certain people that kind of were certain things, maybe that you could turn, hold them together, or if they were like, not into sexual assault. You know what I mean?
Of course, we had that one unit at one point that did just sex offenders, that unit's now gone. We absorbed all that back into the regular probation office. So, we're taking care of the, we have the general probation, the adult drug court, the juvenile drug court, the sex offenders, if I can leave something out. In Boone County, we also have a school-based probation officer over there for truth and purposes. I don't want to forget, it seems like I'm leaving something.
Just juvenile and general.
Regular juvenile and adult, right, yeah.
You know, we, I had a lot of questions with the Supreme Court over spades and, you know, when we were trying to figure out how to move the magistrates over there and why they pay for certain things and what others and...
Which I don't get.
And everybody you talked to seemed to tell you something different than they may have said.
Yeah, definitely.
I've talked to several different people up there, but several different names.
The person that you, that you're hiring, the new person, are they going to be doing drug screens and things like that, or?
Most...
What would they be doing in the office of me?
Being a probation officer. Most of the drug screens now are done at the day report center. So, we don't handle many of those thankfully.
Do you do counseling or anything like that up here?
It's a lot of case management, you know, paperwork. You meet with those people at least once a month, and most of them now are twice a month, depending upon their risk.
How much file storage, things like that, do you have?
We keep all the files in where Heidi and Linda are now, and so I have the two secretaries in a space made for one. We use, since we use the old library, we took advantage of having the library shelves and made open filing. So, we have that, it's not ideal. I don't have a closet anywhere so I can't store anything. I just found out this morning, Randy sent me my closet across the street, maybe not there. So, I don't know what happened to that.
I don't either. Last thing I was going to say, for White Building?
Yeah.
Possibly four.
I think it may just be overflow from everybody else that went right into my spot too.
There's one main office, but there's a ton of overflow that needs taking care of.
So.
It's not your office.
He had, no, I just, I had the one closet over there, that's all I had. And yeah, I had some records. Fortunately, we can purge our records after, three years after a case is closed. Some counties do not purge their records. If we did that, we could be in the building.
You know, ideally, it would be great if we get that email on our home and government and our drug court people, everybody all together.
Yeah, ideally. Well, mostly ideally, because we do, we also need to be near the court, you know, we work for the judge.
Right.
And, you know, you know how he is, he's in court one second and he's standing in my office the next minute saying, "I need you to do this, this, and this." Or Jackie or Jim's popping in and out, his cases are going throughout the day.
So, moving probation over to the church wouldn't be...
Again, not ideal. It would keep us all together possibly.
Because it's the biggest space.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, it is the space. It is the space we got now. And there are many, no, I'm not saying they're not just in particular, but there are many, it's on the list, I don't know, there are many counties that their probation department is in their annex because they're one of the largest growing offices in their...
There are a lot of counties where the probation office is outside the court.
Yeah, it just came across the other day. It was ironic that it, that in the, you know, several, many were because of that.
Does it pose a problem that you know of for those other counties?
I'm going to imagine communication's not as good as it should be, just because you're not where the judge is, the prosecutor is. Then you're going to have time with, or lost time, because instead of right now, I can continue to work on my desk while I'm waiting on my hearing, but if my office is somewhere else, I'm going to be standing in the hall waiting on my hearing like everybody else, not being able to do my job while I'm waiting.
I just wondered if, I don't know, just kind of think of how it might could work, but if during court sessions, if you were in, still, if you still had an office here in this building and those people that you needed during, whatever you needed during that particular day, you still had, if we move you all there, I don't even know what we do with the extra, I mean, the space that we have up there. The other thing too is, you know, we need somebody, we need something to be done by April 1st or whenever this file's going to start. And my thoughts, I mean, my thoughts are, I haven't talked to Mary or any of the commissioners, but, you know, we have an extra desk in our commissioner's office. And we have an extra room in the back, which of course it has stuff in it and things of that nature, but just to be used till, if we can agree upon doing something as far as a long-term solution, which, you know, you've been, you've kind of been in this discussion before.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, as far as, had it started April 1st, then maybe going to Boone County here in the next month or so, we might be able to work out a niche there for him till, for her, to, till we get this done over here, if we can decide on that's what we would want to do.
Probably can't. I couldn't put him down here by himself because he's not going to know what he's doing, he's bringing them. So, I'd have to move somebody else.
Yeah, well, I mean, I was just thinking that, that would, you know, I wouldn't have a problem, like I said, talking to Mary, I don't know how she feels about it, but I'm just looking at trying to get something done so we can keep your, keep your wheels turning while we try to get something fixed that would be okay with both of you. And to me, even if you decide you could work with us on putting you guys over there, then you could still have an office here and your secretaries or whatever still have an office. And you could, however you want to set it up, which, if we were going to do that, I'd want you to set it up. You know what I mean? I'd want you to say, "This will work and this won't." But it might be something if you don't care to think about that, you know, as far as how you, if you could see it work or not.
Could be a holding area.
And then we can, you know, we have the space over there and I don't think it'd be as big as expansive as trying to move the commission and the county clerk's office over there and then have multiple people going over there, the public going over there a lot more than they are now.
And you could make, if you have people to make, you could make with them upstairs.
We, you know, I've been in the church. We were over there not too long ago, that, the main floor, the sanctuary floor. You know, it's obviously large enough, if we got that whole floor, we could divide it up. We could have a conference room, we could have a waiting area, stuff that we don't have now. You know, you could divide the sanctuary into multiple office spaces.
I just think it'd help us a lot.
But we don't have no money. And probation doesn't get money, you know?
What you can do, well, that will help. I was thinking about the Sunday school rooms, it's over on the other end, and then there's that open area from the sanctuary to the classrooms. I don't know if that would use. You could use either of the conferences. I mean, I think between five and six, not even pull up the sanctuary.
Not many for him. If you just, if you look at the, well, if you look at the available space on the main floor outside of the sanctuary, there's not enough space.
Okay. She's counting that carpeted room right there off of the sanctuary.
Yeah, that's kind of open, that's kind of open right there.
Folding door.
It's pretty good size, but, you know...
It is pretty good size.
But, you know, even if we gave, you know, offices that are only 10 by 10s, which isn't a very big office, that would fill a whole floor pretty fast in the way that's, I don't think you could do it. I really, I don't think so.
Well, what we could do...
And then be able to maintain having a conference room or something where we can, you know, Tom has as many as, I'd say some days there's 10, 12 people in his office, doing, between the attorneys and the kids and the parents and the social workers and all that stuff. So, you know, we need, it's dangerous, you know, you get in and they're yelling at each other on the ground. So, we could use a big space, but...
That sanctuary's calling up the, actually the second floor in it.
Ideally, you could.
Yeah. I think, I think it'd be better, better used if you're going to use it for office space too.
Then you're talking lots of money.
Lots of money.
I think you could put section and all, yeah, and the office is cheaper and still have plenty of...
If you wanted to do it, you could, you could do it with two by four study and dry wall and drop ceilings in there. And it would look like a regular shell and you'd have all that empty space above.
Right. But it's, that's not a good idea.
I don't know about the heating and cooling.
I think if we decide to do that, we'd want to anticipate further expansion of our table and chairs, you know what I mean? And that's the only place that I can think of where we could actually do that and what we're not doing, you know, so. But I think if you sit down and draw something up to let, you know, that you think might work and things like that, then we can try to get a number to it and see if something, because that, you know yourself, to get a number, you know, we can't go anywhere else, you know?
Well, okay, yeah, well, that's also in the back of my mind, then, you know, if you don't have the money to move Darrell or you guys or whoever else, you know, where are you going to use the money to move us?
But I, I really...
Because I think we're going to need more individual spaces, which is more walls.
Well, but I think also, just records, those books, one book weighs 100 pounds.
Yeah, that's the only thing that worries me is structure.
Structure, oh, yeah.
I mean, I mean, pick up one of those big books and we have a thousand of them, you know, and then...
You're going to engineer over there and listen.
Yeah. For that, for sure.
I mean, there's still, the space underneath it, there's really no support walls built over there. We built a few, a couple petitions walls, but they're not tied into any real support, you know, to help support the talk. I mean, I did, I'm, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I have concerns.
You don't want to walk in the basement after talk.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have to be an engineer to, if you start doing the math.
I really think renovating it for you guys would be a lot more doable than you've been trying to do, what we were talking about, county clerk's office. The other thing is a safety issue too. It's probably a little safer if we can't not have everybody coming in with the general public here as much as possible. And that would allow most of those people to be going over there, meeting with the counselors and your people and things like that unless they have to report. But I think if, as far as I'm concerned, I think if you could look and draw something up that you think it'd work and then let us get some people in and get some numbers on it.
The courthouse facilities grant is due in October. You don't want to block what went through anymore. And they wanted, they're all in, and they want all your permits, a pretty in-depth grant. We write it every year and that, but I think eventually they're going to come up with something they're going to go and work and get a sign on it. I think this one would, they would occupy enough. We've always, we've never had enough tenants.
I can tell you with the election part, Jerry, having something Taylor made, I mean, everything is where it's supposed to be because we made it the way we want. And I mean...
You know, I did the day report, so, and I've already remodeled two buildings for the county, so...
Right, and it's just, I mean, it would work so much better when you actually know what you're, what you need going in and stuff, that's it.
I have no objection to that. Like I said, it creates a new inconvenience in the communication area, but obviously, you know, you've got new space and an office for everybody, those are all luxuries we've not had.
Well, it makes it like...
It would be really nice. But the other is time, the issue is time too. And we've been waiting for years at this point, as you said, patiently, years, for space.
Well, you know what, having, having thought about it for years, on the other side, I really think if we're closer now, I mean, what we're looking at as far as if this would be something to be agreeable with you, I think if we have the available space, we can figure out what the numbers are, look at our numbers that we have. And that way, we could actually project for you when we'd be finished over there. You know, that's something we've never been able to do, you know, even though we talked a couple of years ago there, we'd never be able to come down with a word of saying that, of course, you know, we want to see what the judge saw about it too, you know, and see, see how he felt about it, so.
As far, you know, if, if that's the route we take, if we do that like we did in the day report center, most of that labor was done with community service. You know, we have one paid employee and the rest of it was community service. So, you know, and we can move along at a pretty good click if there's somebody there that knows what they're doing.
Right, we could get, you know, we handled that downstairs fairly good, so we can get on...
When we were at the day report, I was watching YouTube in the evening and telling what to do in the morning.
I was on that one. I've been with you on that one too.
Yeah.
Really? You know, it boils down to the dollars and cents.
You know, I'll be happy to go over next week and look, and look and see if we can come up with something.
And obviously, we would apply again in October if we had numbers.
Heating and cooling are going to be things that, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to know about.
We are, I mean, it's up to date, we brought that all down. Electricity's good, we had that wired.
Okay.
Those kind of things are good. So, it's just really wall, where you would want a wall, you want a hallway kind of thing. We walked through it about once, you know, we had our...
An ADA compliance, is that ramp compliant? It looks a little steep.
It is a little steep, but she said it will work, the woman that come around, everything at the courthouse is just about non-compliant, but it all works, exactly, they work. So, it is workable and we've got the school, the high school, what's that class? Is it just the building? So, they would help, pretty enough for a structure, is there a few boards or something like that, but, you know?
That's great.
Yeah, so they could help with that.
Get, get us a full plate.
Pardon me?
I said, get us a full plate, George, if you can figure out one that you think will work and, uh, quite frankly, while we're, I mean, if, if we're going to, we're going to proceed with a build out of, of, of an annex, we need to, in my, in my opinion, I think we need to not only think about what the, the needs of probation, but any future needs we may have that we can utilize it for, not just, I mean, while we're at it, if we're already looking at, for instance, when the hospital's already got labor or whatever it may be, any future needs or any current needs.